Okay. But if, I just want to recap, you said the request has been made by the applicant to pull item number four and number six off the consent agenda and onto the regular agenda, is that correct?
That's right. I believe it's the applicant, it might be engineering.
It was the applicant, I have, I have written consent for that.
Okay, and then defer on number five?
Yes.
I should have let you all know, we are live on Facebook, the meeting is now being recorded, oh, well, I said we're live on Facebook, it is almost ready to go live on Facebook, thanks to Lori and the IT department's help. So Mr. Perrier, if you want to give me just a couple more seconds, we can get technology to work for us. And we are live on Facebook, we are recording and we are ready to go, thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you, Bill, just one question, item number five, you said, is that a deferral at the applicant's request?
That's right.
So I will, I will call to order this January 28th meeting of the Galton Municipal Regional Planning Commission, and before we get started, let me read a quick statement pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order number 16, number 34, number 51, and number 60 regarding public meetings and social distancing, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. Members of the Planning Commission may participate by electronic means, and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Galton. What I'd like to do is combine a roll call with a vote to hold this meeting electronically. So Marian, we'll start with a roll call, and when your name is called, please indicate present and approve, if you approve of holding this meeting electronically. Marian, will you take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Present and approve.
Vice Chair Harris.
Present and approve.
Mr. Wilson.
Present and approve.
Councilman Fennell.
Present and approve.
Dr. Organe.
Present and approve.
Mr. Stroudler.
Present and approve.
Ms. Hibbler.
We'll start out, oh, thank you Marian. We'll start out with the invocation, Albert, would you do the honor, please?
Certainly, I will bow before you once again, thanking you for this opportunity, thank you for watching over our community, keeping us in your care, now allow us to do the things you find pleasing in your sight, for the betterment of the community, we ask it all, in Christ's name and for His sake, amen.
Thank you, Albert. Mr. Wilson, you're present in the room with the flag, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, do we have, Mr. Secretary, do we have prior minutes to be approved?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I got minutes dated July the 13th and July the 27th, I move we approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilson to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Fennell, any discussion on the prior minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Marian, will you take a roll call vote, all in, we have a motion and a second to approve those minutes.
Yes. Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Uh.
Councilman Fennell.
Uh.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Uh.
Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. We have seventeen, hold on just a moment, yes, we have sixteen items on the agenda tonight, but items number one through, one through ten are consent agenda, and we will move, at the applicant's request, we're going to move items number four and six off of the consent agenda and onto the regular agenda, and we'll handle those in sequential order that we get to them. Item number five has been deferred, so it is pulled from the consent agenda at the applicant's request, and just to inform the public, the items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine or non-controversial, and they did not require a public hearing, and will be approved in one motion. However, if there's anyone in the public who wishes to remove another item other than four, five, or six off of the consent agenda, please indicate by raising your hand, electronically raising your hand. Josh, do we have anyone who wishes to remove an item?
Mr. Chairman, no one has indicated they'd like to speak on any of these items or remove them from the consent agenda.
Okay, so does anyone on the commission wish to remove any other item other than four, five, or six from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a vote to approve items number, the consent agenda items number one, two, three, seven, eight, nine, and ten, that's one item. I'll make a motion to that effect, that we approve those items as the consent agenda, do I hear a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Harris, any discussion on that? Then all in favor indicate by answering to the roll call vote, Marian, will you please take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Uh.
Councilman Fennell.
Uh.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, and with that, we'll move into the regular agenda, since we'll take them in order, item number four will be our first item, item number four, which was on the consent agenda, moved to the regular agenda. It is resolution number 2020-125, Westfield Phase 2A, a final plat, who is handling that item?
Jillian Ogden, staff planner.
Thank you, go ahead Jillian.
Yes, this is to approve a final plat for Westfield Phase 2A to create 58 attached dwelling lots, three public rights of way, and five open space tracks on 12.08 acres. This was pulled at the applicant's request to address one of the conditions in, on the resolution, it is condition number 21, which addresses the 60-foot water quality stream buffer, and engineering might be able to speak to this, I don't believe they need that condition anymore, I think they clarified that with the applicant, I don't know if Nick wants to jump in here to clarify that for me.
Brian Raischneider with Engineering. Yeah, so the drainage area is less than one square mile, so the 60-foot buffer does not apply, it can be reduced down to 30-foot buffer, the applicant is requesting a 35-foot buffer, so we can go ahead and modify, Mr. Chairman, item number 21, to state 35 instead of 60.
All right, any questions from members of the commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion, as I understand it, let me just, would you restate that one more time, Brian, to change which item condition?
Sure, condition number 21, it states that it needs to be a 60-foot buffer, that can be changed to 35 feet in width.
Okay.
And I see that the applicant has risen their hand, Scott Foster.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Foster.
Josh, if you need to unmute him.
He's been unmuted.
I didn't ask the applicant to speak, that's my mistake, go ahead. Mr. Foster, if you can hear me, I failed to ask if we have a representative for the applicant, I believe you wish to speak, please go ahead.
Mr. Foster, your line has been unmuted, there may be a problem with the microphone on your end. There we go.
Brian did a good job, so I got feedback.
Scott, are you in agreement with what Engineering said?
Yes.
Okay.
In that case, I will make a motion to approve, but changing condition number 21 from a 60-foot buffer to a 35-foot buffer, but in agreement with all other comments by staff.
I'll second your motion.
We have a second by Councilman Fennell, any discussion on that item? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Marian, will you please take a roll call vote, all in favor?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Uh.
Councilman Fennell.
Uh.
Dr. Organe.
Uh.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is item number six, which is resolution number 2020-134, it is Westfield Phase 3B, final plat, Jillian, are you also handling this one?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
This is the final plat for Westfield Phase 3B to create 21 single-family dwelling lots, one public right-of-way, and two open space tracks on 13.34 acres, this is the same issue as the previous item, on this one, this is condition number 23, which we will be changing from 60-foot buffer to a 35-foot stream buffer.
Okay, do we have a representative for the applicant who wishes to speak, Mr. Foster?
I would love to speak, but I got feedback on this.
Okay, well, Mr. Foster, are you in agreement with staff's comments?
Yes.
Thank you, in that case, I will make a motion to approve item number six, but change that comment number 23 to be from a 60-foot buffer down to a 35-foot buffer. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fennell, any discussion or questions on that? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, Marian, will you please take a roll call vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Uh.
Councilman Fennell.
Uh.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, with that, we will move to item number 11, item number 11 is resolution number 2020-131, it's Greensboro North PUD, it's a PUD amendment, this one will come with a public comment after we hear from the applicant, who's handling this item?
Dustin Shane, Galton Planning Department.
Thank you, go ahead Dustin.
All right, so this project is located south of 386 on Greenlee, it's on the east and west sides, and north of Enterprise Drive, and on the, on the east side, south of there, doesn't quite reach the Nashville Pike, this is the, about 47 acres that we're talking about, as you can see, this was once part of the Greensboro North, the Greensboro Village PUD, it was slated to be big box retail, as you can see from the, the plan here, with the parking in front, but as we all know, that's become much less commercially viable these days, this is kind of the vision that was laid out, you can see, looking south from 386, it's going to be a transit-oriented development, if you look on the left, you'll see what was originally approved 10 years ago, and what they're proposing now, so basically all they're doing, they've, they've got all the approvals for a dense form-based code in this northern 148 acres, and they just want to extend that plan, that SP plan down to this 47 acres that reaches almost to Nashville Pike, but not quite, they have different subareas that they've, have been approved for, this is the Village Center, which gets up to about 40 units per acre, pretty dense, like a downtown-type development, it kind, as you fan out, it gets a little bit less intense, more, more like a neighborhood, all the way down to the Village Edge, which could be up to about 15 units per acre, the only amendments they've made with this, or they've, they've eliminated some of the setbacks that they had to increase that walkability and that, that urban feel, they, this, this latest phase will be one of the later pieces to, to come into play, it'll be part of Phase Three, they're proposing quite a bit of green space, but it's 20% is required to be green space, based on the plan, and they're going to respect the streams, and also add street trees and mini parks throughout, and so that ends my presentation, thank you.
Thank you Dustin, do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, we have April Anderson and Anderson Green.
Oh, there's a lot of feedback, hi, this is April Anderson with Loos Design, Dustin explained the project very well, like he said, we're just wanting to bring in that 47 acres from the PUD into the SP, and we've, we've made revisions per planning staff's and engineering staff's comments here for any additional comments that you may have.
Thank you April, I heard two applicants, or I heard two names, does Mr. Green wish to speak as well?
April nailed it.
Okay, now that we've survived the depth charge attack, there's one who wishes to speak on this item, I'll open a public comment.
If you are a member of the public and would like to comment on this issue, please indicate so by raising your hand in the bottom right-hand part of your screen, there should be a function that says raise your hand, we have one phone-in caller with the last three of 056, phone caller, last three, 056, your line has been unmuted. Mr. Chairman, no one else has indicated they'd like to speak on this issue by raising their hand, or by sending in an email to the Planning Department before this meeting.
All right, thank you, with that, I will close the public comment, and I'll open it to questions for staff or for the representative of the applicant, does anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but just, for a general statement, I, you know, after looking through this, I, I think this is an improvement to this overall plan, you know, over the, the big box retail, so I don't have any questions of that, I think it's a good, it looks good.
I know that the one question I raised to staff during the review, or the one question I had, was satisfactorily answered, I asked, are apartments a permitted use in this revision? And the answer is yes, but I was told, not your conventional garden-style apartments, it would, it would be an urban setting, it would look very different, so it satisfied my concerns, and I do have concerns with, you know, apartments. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconding.
So we have a motion to approve with all five staff's comments, second, made by Mr. Harris and seconded by Albert, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, please respond to the roll call vote, and then indicate by saying aye, Marian, will you please take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Uh.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Fennell. Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell. I don't know if he's responding, or, and I can't hear him.
I no longer see Councilman Fennell's video online, have we lost his, the connection with him?
Mr. Chairman, if we want to continue with the meeting, we still have quorum, I'll try to get Councilman Fennell back on the line.
Okay, so Marian, what was, what?
Sorry, it passes six zero.
Thank you, we will move on to item number 12, y'all stop, if, if, if I'm rattling off and you can't hear me, tell, I don't know, raise your hand or something, because I'm trying to mute every time I'm not talking, because of the feedback, item number 12 is resolution number 2020-133, racetrack, store number 1350, amend the site plan for an alternative sign, who's handling this item?
Jillian Ogden, staff planner.
Okay, go ahead Jillian.
Yes, next slide please, this is the racetrack that is proposed at Southwater Avenue in Nichols Lane, it is not yet under construction, but they have come before this body to get an exception to the sign code, they are proposing to have a 12-foot tall sign, instead of an eight-foot tall sign, which is what is the maximum allowed per today's code, next slide please, this is their site plan that they will be constructing, and you'll see in a couple slides, we'll have the, the grading plan, which shows that the site will sit a lot lower, below the street, about five feet lower than the street, once it's actually constructed versus now, so they believe that there is a visibility issue with the sign, and they are limited on where they can, can put it, next slide please. Next slide please. And this is the sign that they're proposing, the sign itself would not get larger, but the brick base underneath it would get taller, next slide please. There's also, due to the lot grading, a rail will be placed along the public sidewalk to meet ADA regulations, which will further obstruct the view of the sign at this location, next slide please. Next slide, you'll see a couple renderings going through here, that they provided us, staff did recommend denial of this application, the, the renderings with the proposed sign do not clearly highlight the difference in slope, if you could go through the next couple slides, at this location, which could better justify a need for an amended site plan for an alternative sign, this just, this does not give a good visual of, of that, and it's hard to tell, obviously, without the site actually being developed at this time, staff believes that there are still other alternative designs and/or locations available for the business to have a visible monument sign, that would avoid the necessity for amending the site plan for an alternative sign, additionally, the site is also allowed a second monument sign on Nichols Lane, and this would give the business additional visibility from the right-of-way, and is already permitted by code, so any notable hardships that may occur and may justify an alternative sign approval, including proposed topography, would likely be a consequence of the development of the site, so that is something for you to take in mind as you consider this application, again, staff did recommend that the Planning Commission deny this resolution, we believe that there are other locations that the applicant can still find a viable sign location, and not need an exception to the sign code, thank you.
Thank you Jillian, do we have a representative for the applicant present or online?
I believe it should be Matt Reingold and...
Victor.
Victor, ah, there's Victor, Victor and Matt, your lines have been unmuted.
Yes, this is Victor Sutapaha, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, first, so this is Victor Sutapaha, Racetrack Petroleum, Atlanta, Georgia, I want to thank Ms. Ogden and the staff, they've been excellent to work with, and also just opportunity from the Planning Commissions to, to, to hear us, definitely understand there's no hardship to, to get a bigger sign, but, you know, we feel like we have good product, if you look at the sign, you know, it's, we're not a place of destination, we're a place of convenience, we're not a Starbucks, you know, when, when patrons come by, they, and they need gas, they, they try to find the, the most convenient access into the gas station, and so we feel like this is, you know, for us, safety, if we put the sign further back, which is a little bit further back toward the left of the site, is still going downhill, and it's in the TVA easement, is further away from the intersection, our patrons or the customers that are in the car, will have a longer time to make a decision, or will not have a longer time to make a decision, so it's going to be for them, if we put it further away, it's going to be hard for them to see the sign, and then they won't have enough time to turn into either Nichols, or to turn into our access drive, so for us, it's just trying to get something that's safe for the customers, even though it's 12 feet, it's, you know, with a topo, with a topo constraints of about five, six feet, it still looks about eight feet, and also, you know, there's other gas stations around us that has a bigger and, and taller sign, and we just want to be competitive with them, and also just have the same level playing field in terms of the signs, so.
Okay, thank you, was there anybody else, representative applicant who wished to speak, there were, Matt, did you have any comments? Matt Reingold? Seeing none, then, any questions from members of the commission for either the applicants or for staff, or comments?
How many comments, other than I think we talked about in the work session, that it's, you know, it seems is the issue of the sign being visible from the road where they would like it's entirely driven by the, the drive access, so.
No, I don't have any other questions. Yeah, no, I have to agree with Mr. Harris, this, this site seems like there was not enough due diligence done on it to begin with, and, and all these hardships and problems that are coming forth, should have been recognized before the site was purchased, but I suppose we need a motion on the floor to have this kind of discussion.
I'll make a motion to deny the, to not, to deny the, the request.
And I will second that motion. Discussion? Discussion?
I, I, I think discussion wise is exactly what we're talking about. The, this, the site is what it is. It didn't change all of a sudden since it was purchased and divided into a service station on there. And then a lot of, a lot of what we're talking about is driven by the access off of Highway one oh nine that engineering never wanted in the first place and is against that, you know, that whole corridor plan. So, um, I, I just, I see no reason to, to give a variance on the sign that is, is really driven by the, you know, the applicant's decisions on, on how to develop the site that maybe wasn't the best one for them.
Couldn't state it any better, but are there any other discussion or, or comments or from members of the commission?
Uh, yes, I got one. I'd like to know who has a bigger sign.
Along Southwater, there's a number of signs that are non-conforming. They're older signs that have been there for, for a while.
It, you know, it, talk about those older signs. If those sites were redeveloped, would they not have to come into compliance with the current sign ordinance?
If they were redeveloped as something else, I believe if they stay the same use, technically they're allowed the existing sign, but were they to redevelop to a different use, they'd need to meet today's code. Yes.
And Jillian, uh, for everyone's benefit, I, I know the spot you're talking about, the alternative location for a sign. Uh, would you use the mouse pointer to circle that? It's, it's to the left of the, it's to the south of the one oh nine entrance. Is that correct?
I believe so. Um, Dustin, do you have? Dustin? Cause I don't have control.
Maybe that's not possible.
Yeah, I don't have control. I'm sorry.
Okay.
What do you, what do you need?
Uh, do you have a mouse that you can show, um, just south of the drive, the ride in, ride out drive? There's kind of a spot that bumps out. Yeah, right in there.
Yeah, that's where staff has suggested to the applicant that it's a suitable alternative location for the sign.
Yes, and they are also allowed a sign on Nichols Lane if they can work that out as well. They're actually allowed two monument signs if they can make them both work.
Two monument signs. Okay.
They are, yes.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris and it's been seconded by myself and the motion is to deny the applicant's request. So if you vote, if you vote aye or yes, you're voting to deny the item. If you vote no, I guess you're voting to approve this, this sign. Does everyone understand that clearly?
I come in, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I had some computer problem. I didn't hear, uh, what the discussion is about. Um, it's about the signs when we discussed last time, but that's all I really know.
Yes, let me give you a, which, did you hear the applicant's, um, uh, comments?
No, uh-uh. I know, I know from the last meeting, he was wanting a, a larger monument sign, put it in a different location. Is that correct? Cause of the dip in the road and, uh, Mr. Harris' motion is to decline.
Yeah, let me try to summarize it real quick, but after I summarize it, I want the applicant to raise their hand if I've incorrectly summarized anything, their, their comments or, uh, anything. Um, Councilman Fennell, the applicant is requesting a variance to the sign ordinance to allow them a taller sign, which they want to place in the, uh, northeast corner of the property, the junction of, well, there you go, there's a picture of it. Uh, the junction of, uh, one oh nine and Nichols Lane. And their reason for requesting a taller sign than our sign ordinance allows is because the topography drops off sharply. If they just put an eight-foot sign in, um, it won't be very visible from the intersection. Um, staff has suggested to them that there's an alternative location south of the, their one oh nine entrance, uh, but their concern is that that's farther away from the entrance when people are stopped. It is a light. They, they may not see it as clearly. They may not make a decision quick enough to turn into Nichols Lane. They won't capture those, those customers. The concern is on the part of the commissioners is that this is a hardship that was created by them by having the site lower. This is something they should have identified earlier. And so Mr. Harris has made a motion to decline their request by.
I understand. Thank you.
Now, I do want the applicant, please step in if I misstated anything in summarizing it.
Yes, this is Victor Sutapaha with Racetrack Petroleum. No, I think, I think you pretty much, um, you know, said it. Um, I think the only thing that I want to mention is that, um, in the area where, um, on the left, on the, on the southern portion, you see the, the gray dark, uh, dash area, that's the TVA easement. So just, so just beyond access to the south, all of that's in the TVA easement. So we're not allowed to put a sign in there. We coordinated with TVA and they said no signs or, or any structures was allowed in there. And then along Nichols, you see that little cash areas too. Um, Gallatin Electric said that we couldn't put anything in, in that area either. So there's definitely a couple of constraints and, and I definitely understand about the, the access. I think the only thing, um, I, I guess that I want to throw out is that if, I guess if, if this access wasn't in contention, wasn't contentious and we were allowed the access, I mean, would you guys be asking us to consider that also? I mean, usually the access is not part of in terms of removing the access to relocate the sign. I guess that's the only thing I want to bring up.
Well, just to be clear, I, um, I can only speak for myself. I was, you know, I was strongly opposed to the access because it violates the, uh, uh, the corridor access management plan that T-Dot put forth. I do realize that the city never officially adopted that access management plan and that's why you have your access. Um, but I've never brought up access in this meeting or talking about removing the access in this plan. We're only supposed to address the issue of the, of the sign tonight. I didn't mean to infer otherwise.
Okay. And, and we did, you know, just, and we did bring it up. We did bring it to T-Dot and they did approve it. But, I mean, yes, this is about the signage. I think the only, for us, we just wanted to get a sign that's visible. Uh, we actually did ask to see if we could put on the canopy too and not do, uh, a monument sign. But I think, uh, Ms. Ogden said that you're not allowed to do, uh, an LED sign on, on the canopy. So we're just trying to get some options, just, just to make sure that, um, patrons can see our sign. We're not trying to get it bigger. We just wanted it to be taller because it kind of dips, you know, below the road. That's all.
Any other questions or discussion from members of the commission? Seeing none, then we'll call for a vote. I'll remind you, if you vote aye, you're voting to decline the resolution. Marian, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell.
Aye.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Strather. Ms. Hibler. Resolution passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Let me clarify, the resolution does not pass because
That is correct.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
Well, no, we made a resolution to deny the applicant's request.
No, you just voted to deny the request. There was, there's, the resolution was an affirmative resolution to approve the, their request and y'all denied that.
We had a motion and a second. We had a motion by Council, uh, Matt Harris and a second by me to deny the applicant's request.
Right. But you didn't approve the resolution because the resolution was for approval of the sign.
I'm sorry, Jillian. I thought Okay.
You voted to deny that resolution.
I'll make sure I mark that.
Okay.
All right. This is this whole thing about double negatives. Was the resolution, uh, yes, we voted to deny the resolution.
Yeah.
And which was the same as staff's recommendation. Is that correct, Bill?
That's correct.
Okay, we're on the same page. Uh, we'll move on to item number thirteen, which is resolution number two zero two zero dash one three eight, a zoning code amendment. Article twelve accessory structures and article thirteen performance measures and architectural provisions, City of Gallatin Planning Department. This will come with a public comment after we hear from staff, um, on the item. So who's handling this item?
I'll introduce it and also let, um, hand off to Commissioner Harris, who will be able to explain some things as well. Uh, just a little history on this. Uh, this is a proposed code amendment that would change partial, parts of our zoning code, article twelve and article thirteen, by changing, uh, the accessory structure requirements and provisions as well as the, those provisions for architectural design compatibility. Just to kind of a highlight, uh, back in, I believe it was January, there was a, a permit that was issued on a property that would allow for the construction of an accessory structure in an older subdivision, uh, that is no longer protected by covenants and restrictions. The, uh, city staff approved that accessory structure based on certain provisions and restrictions on the size of the structure. And, uh, the neighboring property owner appealed the, that decision, administrative decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals heard that case and reversed the, uh, planning department's interpretation and applicant, application of the code. And, uh, therefore, based on their decision, we had administratively tried to reevaluate how we determine how the, the section of the code, in this case just article thirteen, was to apply. Uh, it did, then went back to the planning commission for a discussion and the planning commission, uh, recommended that a advisory committee be established to study the, the sections of the code, primarily article thirteen. Uh, that, uh, advisory committee was appointed by the mayor and, uh, consists of three persons, including Mr. Harris, who is a planning commission member. Uh, the, that advisory committee worked through much of the late spring and into the summer and at the end of August, uh, made a recommendation to change the code to address some of the concerns that were expressed, uh, by, uh, area property owners, the applicant and also the planning commission earlier and as well as staff. So the results of that recommendation by the advisory committee are described in a draft ordinance that's part, attached to the resolution in your agenda package, includes language in a typical draft, uh, ordinance change format. And what we have, of course, is the new language that was recommended by the, the committee is shown in underline text and the text to be removed is shown by strike through. Now, initially, the architectural advisory committee was reviewing article thirteen, but after reviewing article thirteen, they also thought it might be appropriate to look at the accessory structures, uh, provisions as well in relation to Balkan size of buildings and things, some of the, some of the items that are addressed in article thirteen. So they did make some recommendations for accessory structures, uh, to limit the size of those and which, which one of those, uh, essentially created a cutoff that those accessory structures that are larger than 200 square feet, which also require permit, would then have to apply for that permit and meet the required setbacks for primary structure in that zoning district. So that just essentially means that the larger accessory structures that are permitted on a lot would have to set back much further than they do if they were smaller little, uh, building as well, less than 200 square feet. So that was the main part of the change, you know, to the accessory structures. Uh, we don't allow, uh, uh, accessory structures in front yards, except in agricultural districts and industrial districts. Uh, the other portions of change, uh, seem kind of minor, but they're important. And this was, uh, under the advice of our city attorney's office is that, uh, and the committee also agreed to this is that, uh, we wanted to clarify specifically which, uh, districts and developments in these older neighborhoods, let's call it, that would be accepted from the compatibility of adjacent structures provisions in subsection B. So right now it says in most cases, in, in, uh, most cases, uh, the architectural provisions apply. So under the direction of our attorney's office, we would, we changed that language to in all cases, uh, in all districts and we, with the exception of specifically identified districts that are also described under subsection A in, in article thirteen, section thirteen oh eight, that they would be exempt as well. So this just clarifies that there's a distinction, uh, between the compatibility of adjacent structures, depending on which zoning district you are, and that they're exempt, this compatibility provisions would be exempt in these older, uh, established zoning districts. There's also the opportunity in the, um, compatibility provisions that in those districts where it does apply, that the applicant could ask for an alternative architecture, which is commonly reviewed and approved by or not approved, considered by, I should say, by the planning commission. Other than that, uh, there are not any significant changes. It's pretty simple. I know it took a long time, but it, it, there was a lot of review and discussion by the committee. I think Mr. Harris might want to chime in and, and give his, uh, opinion on that. One thing I will mention is that the committee, uh, more than once said that they don't, do not want the city to become the, the homeowners association and try to enforce covenants and restrictions that are normally applied in those subdivisions that have retained those. Uh, and so, uh, that is an important aspect as to why the, uh, recommendation is the way that it is. So, uh, Mr. Harris, uh, I'll let you, uh, kind of describe how you see it as well and clarify anything that I may have said wrong.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. I think the, he did a, a good job covering the, the, the broad strokes and the overview of, of the changes that the committee worked through. One that, that was also added in the, uh, the article twelve for the accessory structures that, that he didn't mention is one of these that's added. There is also that with the accessory structures that, that, you know, that last line of the, the no accessory buildings or structures in combination with the principal buildings or structures, I'll be permitted, that exceed the maximum lot coverage. And that, that the committee felt was necessary to, to put a maximum amount of square footage of buildings that could be put onto a residential lot. I think we've seen some cases where, you know, you have, you know, a primary residence that's large and then, um, you know, accessory structures get added to where there's just a lot of, a lot of structure on one piece of property. So that would, that would help in limiting the, the amount of, or the size of, of buildings that could be built, uh, on those, on those districts. The, on the, the section thirteen, the architectural character and compatibility, as Mr. McCord said, that was, you know, some of the advice from the legal department, clarifying the compatibility of adjacent buildings and what districts it, it actually applied to. So, um, the advisor committee did, you know, mentioned numerous times, trying to avoid becoming the architectural review board for the city and, and some of these neighborhoods. And, you know, as we, as we talked through it and worked through some of the, the questions, you know, I think the, the feelings of the, of the committee were that a lot of these, you know, compatibility questions become very subjective as to what is considered compatible with, you know, the house next door or, or, or around it. And furthermore, the, you know, in, in researching and talking with staff about how, how often this has become an issue in the last, you know, 20 years, really, I think we have had the, the one, the one case that's kind of brought us to here as having, having been an issue that, you know, comes down to question of compatibility. So the, the recommendation would bring the, the ordinances more in line with how the city and the staff has applied the ordinance over the last 20 years.
Matt, can I ask a question?
Uh, certainly.
I appreciate you serving on that committee and I know that that's, that's a difficult thing to do. Um, this all started over the longboat. This all started over the Longboat incident, correct?
Yes.
So right now, if I'm, if I'm hearing this right, we're going to take, we're going to remove the architectural compatibility standards from the residential districts, correct?
That's, that, that, that would be correct. Now, it would, this would apply to, you know, if, you know, if, if a subdivision has a homeowner's association or restrictive covenances that prohibit those buildings and things, that, that this does not override that. So this would apply to the few, I guess, neighborhoods in town that either have never had a restricted covenants or homeowner's association or let it expire.
But the, the one, one catalyst for all this is what I'm, I'm concerned about. So if we remove this right here, they have a pending permit or a metal structure that's going to be 14, 15 foot tall. So by removing this compatibility right here, then that, that, they could actually get that permitted for permissible usage with that all metal building in that residential location. Is that correct?
Councilman Fennell, this is Josh King. There was an application submitted for a structure similar as you've described. Planning staff has denied that application for construction of that building earlier this summer, based on the decision of the BZA and the, the interpretation of Article 12 and Article 13 at that time. The structure has not been resubmitted or submitted to city staff again to, for any clarification or making any changes to that application.
Okay, I got that. But if we remove these standards right here, if they could resubmit another application, and they could actually get it permitted for that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and Sean, to that point, I think, you know, it's so long, you know, in theory, yes, it would also have to comply with the, you know, the amendments to accessory structures that if, if the building setbacks for that property are 10-foot sideyards, then the building, if it's greater than 200 square feet, they would have to move it to, you know, 10-foot off the property line to conform with the same setbacks as, as the house of the primary structure.
I, I understand that, and, and I don't mean to be a thorn in you guys' side, but from the get-go, I, I turn around and say that just, that, that structure does not job with that neighborhood or in that location. And that's my comments right there. I just, well, this item right here also have to go before the city council to be blessed, correct?
Yes, it would.
All right, thank y'all.
You know what, I want to kind of point out, you know, there's a lot of places in town, and I don't know if they are in this one particular neighborhood, which really brought this issue to light. There are a lot of places where, on maybe one side of a vacant lot, there's a brick house, and then the other lot on the other side might be a siding house. So what do you do there?
I, I understand, Bill. I mean, it's a hard call, guys. I, I understand.
Mr. Harris, thank you for serving on that committee, leading up, kind of heading up that committee. And just for the record, will you remind everybody, we have several professionals that have specific experience. Yourself is a builder, I believe we had an architect on there, and was the third an engineer?
He was, yeah, there was an engineer. So this was, you know, a committee of, of, of folks that, that live in this world, as builders and engineers and architects, and, you know, so that, you know, there was, there was a lot of thorough discussion of the pros and the cons, and, you know, as, and I, I think one of the things that came back to it is, you know, there's, you know, having heard from both sides of, of people who, who are for and against this, there's a lot of people that purchase homes specifically in these subdivisions that don't have restrictive covenances, so that they do have the freedom to, to use their property and, and maybe build something that a Fairby plantation or a Foxland or some other neighborhood would never allow. And so there's, you know, it's, I, the challenge of this is, no matter which way you do it, someone's not, probably not going to be happy, and the person who, who's buying the, who's buying in that neighborhood because they want to put up a metal storage building, you know, you know, some of those people made those decisions to buy because of that. And so it, it just becomes a very difficult thing to decide, you know, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, and then how do you, how do you enforce that as a city without creating an entire department that's dedicated to, you know, looking at architecture on every permit that comes in the door?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to mention that we did receive an email today from an area resident out there who is opposed to changing any of the code that would also, I should say, they support upholding the interpretation that was applied after the BZA decision. So, yeah, there, there you go, that's, Mr. Lam at Woodlake Drive there, sent that email in, and I think that was emailed to each of y'all earlier today.
There was, and there was a second one too, Mr. McCord, I believe.
Okay, I'm not aware of that.
It is. My intention is to read both of those emails for the record, if those people don't speak during the public comment forthcoming.
Okay.
Just to get it off the record. So at this time, I'll open it up to a public comment. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak in regards to this item? Please raise your hand electronically, and you'll be recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I see two names that have emailed us earlier today, Mr. Don Lam and Ms. Zoe Doyle. I will unmute both Don and Zoe, and if anyone else is out there that would like to speak on this item, please indicate so by raising your hand. But right now, Don Lam, your line has been unmuted. Don Lam, your line has been unmuted.
Okay, I pretty well said what I needed to say in the email. It just basically, we're just taking any restrictions away from building, you know, subdivision, so I could build, as long as I don't go over the lot size, I could build any structure I wanted to, any material, just do anything I wanted to. And I just don't think that's what City of Gallatin wanted in subdivisions.
Mr. Lam, I'll just step in and say, when I said I was going to read the emails, I wasn't sure if y'all were going to be present to speak, so I won't read your email verbatim if you're here to speak on your behalf. If there's anything more specific you want to cover, please, please do so, or cover the major points of your email. I'm not sure if everyone has read that yet. I have read it myself, but.
Well, I.
Mr. Lam, do you wish to elaborate on that anymore? Go ahead, please.
Okay. I wasn't prepared to speak because I thought the information on the meeting said, send it in beforehand. I thought section A of 1308010, section A basically deals with strict concrete, stone and brick, what you do on a lot. B, section B, is with the compatibility with other buildings, no exceptions, doesn't give any exceptions there. Proposal would basically eliminate any protection from the subdivisions other than for lot coverage. That way, somebody could build a pole barn in the middle neighborhood, 55 feet by 36 feet by 22 feet, which the BZA said that is not correct. Their proposal would remove any restrictions relative to compatibility and leave subdivisions with no protection other than lot size. Pretty much mean you could do anything you wanted to, as long as you stayed within the lot size. We've got numerous zoning articles that protect, they're supposed to protect the subdivisions for stability of the residents, commercial, supposed to protect the use of buildings and structures which are incompatible with the character of the subdivision. City of Gallatin Move On 2020 actually addresses subdivisions that don't have, that they lack the design and covenants, which we're just saying that we're not addressing that. See, no neighborhood that will be improved in any way by letting large structures be built in a neighborhood that is going to decrease the property value of the neighbors. And I just recommend we not approve those changes.
Thank you, Mr. Lam. If you have nothing further to add, well, we have Ms. Zoe Doyle, and Ms. Doyle, I would ask, is your email the one that begins with, I respectfully urge the commission to vote no, and ends with a sentence for these reasons, I respectfully request that you vote no on the proposed resolution?
Yes, that's my email.
Okay, well, I'll let you speak rather than read the email. Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm the homeowner myself, and my husband David are the homeowners that appealed the permit for the structure on Longboat Drive. The reason that we did appeal it is that the structure was so large. It was not your typical outbuilding, not your typical garden shed or storage shed that you might see at Lowe's or the Home Depot. This was an enormous structure, 55 feet long, 36 feet wide, 22 feet tall, made entirely of metal. The side that was going to abut my property was 55 feet long and 22 feet tall and didn't have a single opening. There were two RV-sized openings in the front for the driveway access, and what I call a people door, and a window on, on the opposite side. But on the side that faced my backyard and my kitchen window, in my back deck, it was just literally 55 feet long, 22 feet tall of metal. So essentially like an industrial type of a warehouse or commercial building on a half acre lot, that the lot next door is actually .61 acre, so just over a half acre lot. So that was my objection to that structure. It did not, was not compatible with the neighborhood, with the, the structures next door to it, and it was enormous. I agree wholeheartedly that the city planning department should not be in the business of spending its valuable time addressing architectural compatibility as to small garden sheds and small storage structures. I don't think there's any reason for the city to do that. It has much bigger fish to fry, and I personally don't object to any of those buildings. This, however, was an extreme case, and I think that's been mentioned before. I know that Mr. Moore, the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals, mentioned, I think he had been serving, it was more than 20 years on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and he mentioned that this was the only time that he had ever seen a structure like this come before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So respectfully, I would submit that changing the architectural or the zoning ordinance to remove the architectural compatibility standards is a case of the, the tail wagging the dog. This was such an unusual case, I don't suspect that the, that the city planning department is going to be inundated with similar cases of folks wanting to build nearly 2,000 square foot pole barns on half acre lots in city subdivisions. As to the comments about the city having to act as an HOA and about Bay Point, I want to clarify a couple of things for the record. There are sections of Bay Point that do in fact have active covenants and restrictions. In fact, Mr. Lam, who just spoke, is in a butter to the, the property on Longboat Drive where this structure was permitted. And Mr. Lam and, and all of the folks on, on Woodlake Drive who abut that property from the rear, live in section seven of Bay Point, and they have active covenants and restrictions. Our section, section six, they lapsed. Bay Point has not had an HOA in years, many, many years, I think about since 1991. No one knew that they were coming due, it happened, and once it had happened, it was too late to take back. But as far as the city being in charge of, I guess as Mr. Harris put it, acting as if they're an HOA, I would submit to you that the Gallatin on the Move 2020, which is the general development plan that this body adopted for Gallatin, specifically references established suburban neighborhoods, and it specifically states in that plan that a general development strategy for that type of section of the city would be to protect those neighborhoods that no longer have active covenants and restrictions. And specifically named within the plan are Bay Point, Woodvale, Halewood, sections off of Douglas Bend, Lockfore Road in Peninsula, Grandview on the east side of Gallatin. So there are in fact many areas of Gallatin that I think could be harmed if the city chose to completely obliterate the compatibility standards, especially when it's an issue that has only come up once in 20 years and is unlikely to come up to this extreme degree So I think that's something that's really just important for the commission to consider when it, it deliberates on this issue. And I'd ask you finally to really think about what you want Gallatin to look like, and whether or not you want your established and stable neighborhoods to stay stable, or if you want them to become unstable. A good way for them to become unstable is to allow structures that have that type of commercial or industrial type of characteristic on small lots in the city, that's going to drive down property values, and ultimately, that's going to drive down the tax base for the city. I can't imagine that that's what the majority of the residents of the City of Gallatin want to see, or that that's the direction that they want to see their city go in. And as I said before, respectfully, I would submit it's a case of the tail wagging the dog, and it's really not necessary to undertake any changes in terms of the compatibility standards when we've only seen this happen one time in 20 years. I thank you very much for listening, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Josh, do we have anyone else in the public who wishes to speak?
We have no one else that's indicated by raising their hand, and there were two emails received. One came in, the last one was from Zoe Doyle, after I had updated the slide. All of those have been emailed to you, and Mary Ann will ensure that those become part of the permanent record.
Both the emails were, well, one email was from Mr. Lam and the other was from Mrs. Doyle, so I think that they, they have spoken and submitted that in the email. With that, I will close, seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing and open the discussion to members of the commission, any questions for staff, or for Mr. Harris specifically. John?
Yes, Dr. Regan?
Yeah, I would like, you know, I don't disagree with anything that Mr. Lam or Zoe Doyle said, I'd like the staff to speak to that about the protection of the older neighborhoods and architectural purity that's there with. purity that's there with, without these large out-of-character structures that could be put on a lot?
Well, one thing, and I'll try to address that, one thing, and that the, we did put in the ordinance for accessory structures is how we applied it before, but we wanted to put it in the accessory structure section is that the accessory structure and the principal building shall not exceed the maximum lot coverage for a lot. So we also already have in our code that the accessory structure cannot be larger than the principal structure. So the accessory structure can't be larger in square footage than the home. The combination of the two or more than one accessory structure and the principal structure can only cover a certain percentage of a lot. And that you could do, achieve that in a number of ways by having no accessory structures and having the principal structure be, max out the coverage of the lot. Or you could have a smaller home and a combination of one or more accessory structures that meet those setback restrictions. We also, accessory structures cannot exceed the height limitation of any building in that particular zoning district. I realize there are certain neighborhoods that some people would like to have higher levels of design standards that apply to. That could be done, I suppose. You would have to pick and choose which platted developments that you want to provide some kind of higher standard to. You probably could even identify them in the code, but you'll, you don't want to leave anybody out that wants to be included. And you don't want to include somebody that would prefer to be left out. That would be another task that was not discussed at the Architectural Advisory Committee meeting. The policy statements and the strategies that are mentioned in the comp plan are not code themselves. They are adopted by, they're essentially guidelines. The specifics of that are implemented through the land development regulations, primarily the zoning code. So those are intended that the way the existing code is written and/or the amended code is meant to apply that particular provision in the comp plan. So it doesn't mean that certain neighborhoods necessarily have to have a different standard. We do have different standards that are applied in master development plans, and those communities are more than welcome to create their, recreate a homeowners association to address these issues, if that's what they wish to do. I'm sorry that they allowed those covenants and restrictions to lapse. But we have other developments where they, they commonly lapse when these projects are built out over an extended period of time. We've also presented to both the Planning Commission, as well as I think the Architectural Advisory Commission, a number of photographs of various places all over town in various zoning districts, including those accepted here, of where people have built accessory structures in their backyards and in nice homes, too. They built sizable accessory structures in their backyard. So you can drive up and down certain roadways throughout town in nice neighborhoods, if you want to call them that. And you have some of these large storage hobby shops, whatever they use them for, buildings, and some of them don't even match the architectural size of the house or the materials of the house. So again, the, I want to mention that the committee studied these issues. And again, where there's just a small tinkering of words, there are, you know, the compatibility provisions, and I mentioned this earlier, said in most cases, other than those described in Section A above, that these compatibility provisions apply. Well, that's not all cases. It's, it would be changed to all cases, and not only that, would specifically identify the accepted districts that are described in A above. So if there's, if it mentions most districts, there must be some that are not where it's applicable. So we wanted to clarify that. That's an important aspect of the change to Article thirteen, Section B. So, I mean, if y'all want to kick this around again, send it back to the committee, create special districts which have greater protections, even though they have the same zoning, that's up to y'all. But
Mr. Perre, I may add or ask, so I know one of the things we talked about in the Advisory Committee, then, so help me, you know, help me clarify this so I don't state it wrong. If, if a subdivision wanted to not create a restrictive covenants, but, you know, could they petition to have themselves designated a special district with more stringent rules if enough of the neighbors wanted to do that?
Mr. Harris, I've got pulled up on your screen subsection E of Article thirteen of the zoning ordinance. To my knowledge, this has been added to protect existing infill, or I'm sorry, existing neighborhoods within the city that have been plotted and recorded for a period of ten years or more. And this would allow some, some of the subdivisions that are existing within the city that may not, may not have HOA protections in place. They can petition Planning Commission to be designated residential infill development design standards and have essentially some degree of protection for the existing neighborhood.
And this was, this was one of the things that was brought up in the committee, that there's, there is a process in place where if a neighborhood wanted more stringent rules, that there's a, there's a process where they can ask for them without the city or the Planning Commission having to go through and decide which neighborhoods special districts should apply to. So there's, so that is there if, if the neighbors, even in this case, or the Bay Point where their restrictive covenances have expired, they could petition to be designated a, you know, special area and have some more protections without, you know, applying it citywide. So.
Yeah, and there are infill districts or not, I shouldn't say infill, overlay districts, which can be created. And usually these overlay districts will create opportunities for certain uses to be allowed that are not normally allowed in certain zoning districts. And, but you could apply it to bulk and area requirements as well as architecture if you wished. Just finding out which one of those areas are appropriate to apply and what those restrictions are going to be is going to be the harder, the harder ways to try to determine what, what that would be for maybe even all of the overlay districts you might imagine. So if an R20's owned property on one side of town would like an overlay, they might want different standards than another one on the other opposite side of town. It could get quite cumbersome and difficult to administer.
All right, I'll just step in and say, whatever we do tonight, the one thing we don't need to do is send this back for the committee to rehash it out. They've worked on this for months. And we need some resolution to this. I will say that I was part of that BZA decision to overturn staff's decision regarding this building. But I did so because there was ambiguity to the way that the code was written. And what we needed was clarity and a way to follow the policy and apply it. And that's what the committee has done. And in their discussion, they've certainly convinced me that it is impossible to leave this open-ended and subjective. I'm sorry, if that twenty by, or thirty by twenty-foot-tall building was built in the neighborhood, I would shake my head and say, that's a shame. But I do not want to become an HOA for the entire city and for everyone that's allowed their covenants to expire. So I really encourage us to take an up-down vote on this, this draft that the committee has worked so hard to create. It may not, I may not like it necessarily, but I certainly see it's the only way to move forward, in my opinion. Somebody else? Who else wishes to speak? Yes, Alana?
I'm trying to get, make sure I have a grasp on all of it and just not, not as straightforward, I guess, from my understanding, which I'm still learning this, but um, like, I understand what you're saying, having less ambiguity to the code, but is this like, I get what we're trying to do, but is this achieving what we're trying to do and protecting the, what we already have established and with the, with the growth plan that was already established? Is it all cohesively working together and not working apart from each other? That was just my question about that. Is it all in line? Are they all working together towards the same end?
Would anyone, I think that was a question to the commission as a whole. Would anyone like to chime in and comment? Good comments, Alana.
No, it's, it's good comments. I'll, I'll try to help. I think the, the issue really is the, is the ambiguity that, you know, the ordinance wasn't clear on how it, how it should be applied. And the, the real challenge comes into John's comment and to the committees of the city being an HOA or trying to be an architectural board is, you know, while most people, you know, or there's a lot of people that wouldn't want a big building built next door to them, you know, it becomes a very subjective thing of, you know, how close is too close? If you have a two-acre lot, is it okay? But if it's a half-acre lot, it's now not okay. And, you know, which is, you know, what restrictive covenances serve to do for those neighborhoods. So, you know, after looking through this now for, for months and reading more than I ever thought I wanted to know about this ordinance, the, you know, I think the challenge is the Gallatin 2020 on the move plan, you know, it, it laid out a mandate or guidance, if you will, in a way that was almost impossible to, to follow. That, yes, you want to protect older subdivisions, but how do you, how do you protect them if they've, if they've decided not to protect themselves by letting their covenants require? So again, like, I hate it for the folks. I don't, you know, I don't know that it's the perfect answer, but I agree with Mr. Perre. We've, we've got to give some clarity to the ordinance of staff and how to interpret it and move forward. So.
So
Oh, go ahead, Alana, please.
No, go ahead. You might, you might address it.
Well, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the city does not enforce private covenants. So Fairview HOA has a really strong HOA and covenants. If somebody built a pole barn in the very center of Fairview, and Fairview HOA chose not to enforce their own covenants, would the city step in and enforce their own set of rules or not? Right now, the way it's written, written law is, no, we do not. We do not. It's up to each neighborhood to enforce their own covenants. So I like the idea of neighbors banding together and petitioning to become a, an overlay district where they set up covenants. If that's possible, then I think the onus is on the neighbors to, to do that. That's all.
So if a person, individual property owner came and had a potential structure they wanted to put on with, okay, can you give me the both scenarios? The one we have now and the one that is proposed, if I have this large structure that my neighbors don't want, that doesn't fit the character because of the same building material and size? The current setup versus the proposed setup? Which one gives teeth to actually address that? Or is that what we're talking about, that the city acting as a HOA type?
Alana, this is Josh. The, the scenarios you've described, the one would be, the first one would be under the current rules and regulations as they're being interpreted. And the second one would be under the new rules and regulations as proposed. The first option, we would review the structure against all aspects of our zoning ordinance related to size, compatibility, window and door openings, materials, roof form, ornamentation, layout on the structure, or I'm sorry, layout on the lot, size of it in relationship to the lot and the main house. Under the new proposal, we would review it for maximum lot coverage and placement. But we would not regulate the specific architecture type of material, window and door openings, or roof form. We would only look at the setbacks of the structure and ensure that it does not exceed the maximum lot coverage. And then it is smaller, it is the same size or smaller than the main structure on the lot.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Josh.
Is anyone else?
Yeah.
To comment?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, Councilman Fennell.
Yeah, Bill or Josh, if this thing passes, will there be something to go out to the neighborhoods that are not protected under the covenants, telling them what is, what changes have occurred? You know, otherwise they wouldn't know until the next pole barn went up.
Councilman Fennell, that's something that we can look at doing and balancing that with our existing resources within the department and our current workload. There would be a certain amount of research that needs to be done into each of the CCRs of, recorded with the County Register of Deeds. Because some subdivisions have recorded it for all phases. Others, like the, what we're looking at on Longboat, was done on a phase-by-phase basis. So we would have to spend a little bit more time researching individual neighborhoods and their CCRs to see if they're still active or not.
Matt, I do commend you for trying to or having to deal with this situation, because this is a very hard item to try to fix. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I think, to kind of clarify, I think the, the changes that are being suggested for Article thirteen, for Section thirteen, really, you know, bring into, bring the ordinance into compliance with the way, you know, with the way it's been applied in the past anyway. So we're bringing clarity to it. Is it, is it perfect? Not necessarily, but it does bring clarity to it, to that. So I do appreciate it. So, you know, it was a lot of work, but it's a, hopefully we ought to move this forward.
And I want to just emphasize that, you know, this ordinance has been like this for quite a long time. I think that if they intended for the compatibility provisions to supersede in many ways the materials section, then the materials section would have been embedded in part of the paragraph of the compatibility provisions and not made a separate part of it. So, I mean, if we, if y'all want to move towards requiring compatibility and trying to describe that and avoid trying to create in a subjective way of applying it, then we would just restructure the whole architectural provision section and embed the materials as part of the compatibility provisions. So, but that's not the direction that we were asked to take. And kind of getting on to what Josh was saying, to Mr. Fennell's question, trying to notify every property owner that would be or potentially could be affected by this change in code would be an enormous effort to, because I'm imagining that of these accepted zoning districts, that probably includes well more than fifty percent of all the parcels in the city. So how would we go about doing that? Now, certainly we can put notices on our website indicating there's a change in code, and this is what it is. And this whole process right here is all part of the public notification process. But I know that there's been, over the years, there have been state legislators who really are, in one way, try to subvert the zoning process or rezoning process, is they propose legislation that would do exactly that, that you would have to notify every is they propose legislation that would do exactly that, that you would have to notify everybody whenever there was a change in the code that would be potentially affected by that change in the code. That has, at least uh at this point, not gone anywhere with the legislature. But that is one way of, you know, ensuring that you'll never have another zoning code because it'd be extremely cumbersome to try to apply and minister that and very expensive as well.
Um, do we, sorry, do we have any other uh comments from members of the commission? Or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll I'll make a motion that we approve. The recommendations.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I seconded by Dr. Rick Organe. Any discussion on uh the motion? The motion is to approve the um changes made to Article twelve accessory structures and Article thirteen performance measures and architectural provisions of the city as determined by the committee.
I have one question of clarification. So I Mr. Bill mentioned, so the com- compatibility material aspect isn't wrapped up into this part? He's saying that part was not addressed by what was asked to do. Is that correct?
Correct. And and again, the committee recommended only some minor changes to the words to clarify that in any special exceptions in these certain zoning districts, these older, let's call them older zoning districts, that the compatibility provisions do not apply in these older zoning districts. They will apply and the planning commission can continue to apply these in the master plan or the newer zoning districts. Uh, and those are generally your 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 master plans that you deal with almost all of these subdivisions that we uh review for, particularly if they involve a rezoning.
So this item will go forward to uh council?
If it has changed ordinance.
After a game, wait.
If it passes.
Well, we'll we'll take it to council either way. We we can take it with a approval or not approving.
Yeah, our vote tonight is to recommend for approval of these changes or not, and it'll go to council and they'll decide. So we have a motion on the floor by um Mr. Harris, and I think it was seconded by um. Help me out here.
Rick Organe.
After a game, thank you. Any further discussion? Then I'll call for the vote. Uh, Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote? All in favor of of approval of these changes indicate by saying aye. If you're opposed to the changes, say no. Mary Ann, go ahead.
Uh, I believe we've lost Mary Ann, so I'll do the roll call vote. Chair Perrier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson, was that an aye?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Ms. Hibbler? Ms. Hibbler, you're muted.
No, thank you.
Councilman Fennell?
No.
Mr. Strather?
Uh huh.
So we have one, two, three, four, five yes votes, two no votes. The item passes.
Okay. And that will go on to council and uh, thank you. We'll move on to item number fourteen, uh which um. Item number fourteen is one that uh we almost moved to consent agenda. It's uh but we will um address this item. There is no public comment with it. It's item number, resolution number two zero two zero dash one three nine, Paul Jones subdivision, a final plat. Who's handling that item?
That would be, that would be Sharon, I believe. Sharon here?
Okay, now I'm here. Okay. Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Yes, this is a subdivision in um, it's on Sunset Park, Sunset uh Drive in the corner of Sunset and Bentley Circle. It's an older subdivision. A lot of the lots have not, were not platted. Uh, this would have been an automatically on the consent agenda, except it did get ready a little bit late and didn't want to mess up all the step, all the item numbers for all the other cases. What they're doing is taking the one, there's he has extra property. They're both within the range, within the, it's an R fifteen zone. There's property here for a nineteen thousand square foot lot, and there's one one that's going to be fifty thousand square feet. It's just a simple two lot subdivision. There is a small area that they found that was not platted anywhere else, and uh there will be a street acceptance that will come in. It's going to be dedicated to a city roadway. And that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you, Sharon. Um, do we have a representative for the applicant or not?
Bruce, your line's been unmuted.
Okay.
I'm here. I have further to add.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, do we have any questions? I I listened to this for the procedural. Pretty straightforward. Do we have any questions for staff or for the applicant from members of the commission? Seeing none, I'll make a motion for approval of item number fourteen.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? All in favor of approval indicate by answering aye. Josh, will you take a roll call vote?
I can do it if you want to.
Please, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Chair Peru?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Councilman Fennell?
Uh.
Dr. Organe? Dr. Organe?
Everyone's having trouble to load.
Uh.
Ms. Hibbler?
Uh.
And it passes six zero.
Thank you. Um, we'll move on to item number fifteen, which is resolution number two zero two zero dash oh nine zero. Home Depot, it's a subdivision surety, a demand for funds by the City of Galton Engineering Department. Who's handling this item? Sharon?
I believe this item was being handled by the city's engineering department, Nick and Brian. Here we go.
I'll jump in. Uh, Mary Ann Mudrak was contacted. And I, Mary Ann may be able to jump in and and help a little bit with some of those details. She was contacted recently by the um the owner of this surety. And let me see if I can. They uh, is there any way that I can share my screen? It's saying that. Okay. Uh, so, are you seeing my screen now? So.
Yeah.
The Home Depot surety uh has a a small piece of Tulip Poplar Drive here just off of uh Belvedere Drive where it intersects there. As you can see, it's just a few hundred feet um for for some reason, and we have not been able to get a hold of the bank or or any other representative of this surety um since we got this um notice of of non-renewal from them. Uh, but for some reason, they have said that they're not going to renew this surety, and so uh that this section of roadway has not been finished with the final topping, and there's actually a little bit of a share of uh traffic signal contribution for the section as well. And so uh I feel like we don't have a choice but to make a demand on this surety before our opportunity dies and this money disappears. The surety is in the amount according to what I have received from Jillian and Mary Ann, uh the surety is in the amount of a hundred and two thousand dollars, which should.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mary Ann. So that that will definitely cover the expenses, and I expect there to be actually additional funds that we could potentially return uh after we deal with other expenses with the traffic signal.
The. Nick, how big is the area we're talking about that, I mean, the property?
So, i- if maybe, there's probably several people on this call that actually don't know where the Home Depot subdivision was. Uh, so I backed out a little bit. Uh, essentially, all this development that is Preston Park now um initially was the Home Depot subdivision. And um it was done back in two thousand and four. And that there was a surety that was put in place to cover this little connection up here to Belvedere Drive. And then there was also, uh, the surety also covered uh some other pieces within this uh Home Depot um lot area that had been taken over by Preston Park. But for whatever reason, when the folks with the Home Depot uh plat there and in lands sold this area to Preston Park, they left out this piece. And they maintained uh their own surety to finish that piece. They did not give over that obligation to uh the Preston Park developer. And so I I'm not sure why, maybe it was a failure on their part to uh to recognize they still had some exposure there, but you know, we've tried to communicate with them that if the, obviously, the Preston Park developers already replatted the other pieces, and so we would expect them to finish uh those pieces, but the surety that they had in place originally was still uh to remain until their obligation to uh to to complete that section of Tulip Poplar Drive was um taken care of. So, so here we are, you know, initially, this thing started in, like I said, in two thousand and four. But um we're we're sixteen years later and trying to finish this one out for them. So I don't know if you can see this yellow line that I have marked up here right there off of Belvedere Drive.
So Nick, if I understand correctly, their surety was in the form of a surety bond rather than a cash bond that we, or a letter of credit that we can call?
No, it's a letter of credit.
Oh.
Yeah. I think I think this is exactly why we have sureties, so things like this don't slip through the cracks and disappear and the city's left on the hook for them, so.
Right, yeah, I agree, Mr. Harris. I think this one's pretty straightforward. If we do get contacted by someone with the the bank or or the surety provider here within the next couple of weeks before we can make this demand, um I I wouldn't mind bringing this back to you, but again, I don't, I just don't feel like we have much of a choice here but to take action.
Hey, did you say this goes all the way back to two thousand and four?
That's correct, Mr. Fennell. Yeah, I don't know if there was a race between Lowe's and Home Depot and and Lowe's won. But uh, you know, obviously, Home Depot backed out of this property.
Um, do we, Nick, did you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Do we have a representative for the applicant present on or online, rather?
The bank was notified, but we hadn't received a response from them.
Okay.
I recognize all of the names on the attendees list except for Sheldon Griffin. Sheldon Griffin, if you are a member of the bank or representing the applicant, please let us know.
Josh, I spoke with Sheldon earlier. He's representing the other surety that's uh to be discussed after this.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, no one has indicated they'd like to speak on this issue.
Okay, then with that, um I'll make a motion that we uh approve the action of Galton Engineering Division to um to make a demand of the funds of the Home Depot subdivision surety letter of credit.
I second your motion.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Any discussion on that? The only discussion I would add is, this is a big demand we're making. Nick, I just really encourage you that if you move forward and ten days from now, they, like you suggested, they step in and say they can take care of their obligations, you'll stop the execution, right?
Excuse me. Yes, sir, we'll, we'll try to give them as much opportunity as we can. I don't mind doing that at all.
Well, I know you, I know you will. You've given them fifteen years, so. With that, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, we have a motion in a second to approve that uh demand. Uh, Josh or Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote?
Chair Peru?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Councilman Fennell?
Uh.
Dr. Organe?
Yes.
Mr. Strather?
Uh huh.
Ms. Hibler?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. With that, we will move to the final item on our regular agenda, and that is resolution number two zero two zero dash oh eight nine, Abaker's Crossing, a subdivision surety, a demand for funds. Galton Engineering, uh Nick, will you present that?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Um, it just so happens that um we have an adjacent subdivision that um was also kind of uh short on on their obligation here, and we were going to make a recommendation to, uh, well, we have made a recommendation to make a demand um on this surety because um this also has sat out in the field for um about fifteen years or so, and 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 we felt like um we've given this developer um ample time to address the issue. Um, and obviously, we've got Preston Park that has developed um here um adjacent to the subdivision, and now the hotel lots are developing. Um, since we had had taken this action or or moved forward to recommend this action be taken, uh we have had more conversations with the developer um of the remaining pieces of this property, um which technically is the bank who who owns the property, and they're uh they're they're in a position to um to actually bring forward uh an apartment complex developer and development uh for the remaining, or for a large portion of the remaining piece of this property, and so um I think they would like to make a request that we give them uh at least just a little bit more of an extension so that they can pass this, the bank can pass this obligation uh of finishing the Tulip Poplar Drive roadway section that I have highlighted here. Uh, they want to pass this obligation on to uh this this apartment developer. Um, and apparently, that is part of their deal that they have worked out, and um it will be on this planning commission's agenda in October. Um, and so um we may want to allow uh the uh uh representative there uh for this this developer or bank. I actually, I'm not sure if they're representing the bank or they're representing the uh the developer um on this, but um I think it was Josh mentioned Sheldon um was on the line. And so um I I think it'd be appropriate to allow him to speak and and share with uh the planning commission where they are with their project.
Okay, if we have representatives on behalf of that developer, um Sheldon, go ahead. You're, Josh, will you unmute Sheldon's line?
Sheldon, your line's unmuted.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm.
Okay, um, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Sheldon Griffin. I'm with Baker Storey McDonald Properties in Nashville. I'm the real estate broker for limestone owner of this property. The bank. On there's a, it's currently under contract that's proposing to develop this property. And I believe they're going to be on session meeting.
Melissa?
Am I the only one having problems hearing Mr. Griffin?
Uh, no.
No, I'm, yeah, we can't hear.
Griffin, I haven't heard most of what you've said. I'm sorry.
Uh, I think what Mr. Griffin was saying, that there's a proposal for a PMDP amendment for a multifamily user that's going to be coming before this board in October. Staff is currently reviewing those plans now. And based on the conversation from what I've heard from Mr. Griffin and Nick, they're requesting an extension so that the developer, potential developer of the multifamily part can include this in their surety and as part of their project. Mr. Griffin, let me, give me a thumbs up or a hand up if I got that correct. I got a hand up.
Nick, would you be comfortable with a ninety day extension, ninety days only, to allow them to present a plan? Or has it gone long enough?
Right, well, this particular section of roadway is in really bad shape. And and we have had some repairs made on it by the bank over the past few years. And what we explained to Mr. Griffin and his partner on the phone earlier today was that there's not, there's really not very much further we can go with this. Now, an investment could be made by the developer to to save this binder. We we believe that they could come in. There's some, there are some construction practices that they could, they could use here to really save this. But some action needs to be taken really soon, you know, with, within the next six months. And we're really concerned about what the winter months may do to this section of roadway. I I don't mind allowing an extension. I would like the opportunity to recalculate. If we're expecting this roadway to be in this, to be left alone without any attention paid to it through the winter months, then we believe that some more repairs are going to be necessary. And so we would want to to recalculate this this surety amount, and I have not done that yet. So I would like to, I'd like to have the opportunity to do that. But I think, as you suggest, Mr. Chairman, ninety days is, gives us an opportunity to come back to this. And if if they are able to move forward with this real estate transaction, at that point, we should be able to have another discussion with the new developer about the the plans moving forward. And, you know, I think they could, they could probably put thirty to fifty thousand dollars into this section of roadway and and save themselves tremendously on the back end. And so that's what, that's what we would like to to have, you know, that kind of discussion with them. It really is something that, I know ninety days puts us in the next year. Hopefully, we can, we can persuade them to to take some action before the end of the year, though.
Nick, how long will it take you to to do the recalculations to a new surety amount based on the compromised status of the road?
Sure, no, I, we could have that prepared tomorrow. It it won't take us long. So I I think if if you could just, if you wanted to offer a ninety day extension and just write into, or we could revise this resolution to allow a, an updated estimate to be provided by the engineering division staff. When they make this extension, we could, we could provide that that amount to them within the next week so that that they can get this extension back to us and and move on.
Yeah, I would, tell me if this is a legitimate motion. I would suggest that we allow a ninety day extension of the current surety, but that the amount be recalculated as January first, the well, no, the current surety will be pulled unless they transfer the surety responsibilities to this apartment complex. But in which case, it will be recalculated at the at the figure you've given up.
I might, I, just to chime in, my, I'm very familiar with that piece of road. And to Nick's point, it's it's in really rough shape. And, you know, Nick, what's your, you're talking about, you know, the winter months potentially causing more damage to that. We, if we do ninety days to extend, you know, the conversation, that puts us in the winter. Are you, are you past the point of being able to do repairs on the road through the winter? And I'm more, I'm also concerned that you've got the the Preston, it's Preston Park, right? You know, residential, so that that road's now being trafficked by people accessing that that subdivision every day. So it's it's no longer just a big construction zone back there. We've got, we've got the, we've got the hotel that's operational. We've got a lot of residential. What's, what you can't see from this Google map is that that residential neighborhood, it's probably eighty percent built out at this point. You know.
Yes, you're pretty, pretty close.
My, here, here's my concern is this, if, you know, yes, it's been going on fifteen years, is if if the surety passes to what may or may not become an apartment complex adjacent to it, and that takes another year for it to be completed, you know, we're potentially another year, year and a half from seeing this road finished. Was that, is that fair? Or maybe longer?
Well, in my, my discussion with Mr. Griffin earlier, we urged or expressed the the urgency that just because this changes hands, we don't expect a, a twelve building apartment complex to be constructed with parking lot, and that's when everything gets surfaced. We, we certainly let them know that that it was necessary for action to be taken on Tulip Poplar Drive within the next year.
I agree. How, if you just had to guess, would would fifty thousand dollars in improvements keep the binder in place and keep it, you know, from being more damaged over time?
Yes, what we, what we expect, the the prudent thing to do would be to spend somewhere between thirty and fifty and and move ahead with a, we could call it a scratch course or a leveling course where you're a half inch or less of surface mix. That would, that would fill in the gaps that we have, or we've got some segregation that's happening, we've got some pitting that's happening. And so what that does is it kind of caps it off, you know, and it and it gives, it extends the life of that. And it'll actually give us an opportunity to see how well that holds up as as well before we come back. You know, if we allow that to sit through the winter, we can come back and within the next calendar year and have that final surface put down.
Yeah, what I, what I don't want to see this become is like, if you remember the Fox and Harbor subdivision from a few years ago, where the roads just absolutely went to crap and
Right.
then a fortune spent in there trying to repair stuff that, you know, the city never should have had to deal with.
Absolutely.
Um, but I, you know, I'm just, I'm just one person. It's like, I don't mind offering some extension to not pull the whole surety. But, you know, I I don't think it'd be reasonable to ask the people responsible to to commit to spending that thirty to fifty thousand dollars very quickly to to, instead of having to to pay off for all of it now. You know, we still need to have the conversation going forward, but I think at a minimum, they need to make a commitment to to invest the money into this, to the street for, for all the people that are, that are around that are already using it. If it was just sitting in a development with nothing finished and nobody accessing it every day, I'd have a different opinion, but that's just not the case on this.
Matt, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I agree with you right there. I can tell you, I'm just one councilman, but I've been receiving complaints about this road for probably since last winter.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We're losing you, Mr. Fennell. Just barely, for some reason.
I'm sorry, this, this been messing up all night, but did I hear you correctly in saying that sometime in October that we'll, a proposal of apartments on this land will be in front of us?
That was my understanding. Maybe some, I think Josh King had verified that. Is that right, Josh?
The apartments are a, an established use for this subdivision per the PMDP. The, what Mr. Griffin's client is coming in, has submitted and will be presenting before this board next month is a revision to the layout of what has already been approved for this street.
So this is one of the properties that is left, that has already got permission to put apartments on, is what you're telling me?
That is correct.
That is saying, but okay.
Yeah. I I think this street needs to get finished.
I do, too.
Well, then we've heard discussion. If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Put one out there.
Well, I mean, if if I make a motion, it's going to be to 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 demand the surety and finish the street.
Is that a motion, Mr. Harris?
That's a motion. I make a motion that we, we follow engineering's recommendation and make a demand on the funds to finish the Tulip Poplar Drive.
Second.
We have a second by Mrs. Hibler. Any discussion on that? All in favor of engineering making the demand for the surety now indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote?
I think we've lost Mary Ann again. I will do the roll count or roll call vote. Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell.
Ah.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Ms. Hibler.
Aye.
Mr. Strather.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the item passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes the items that we have on the regular agenda. Under other business, we have two items, which is community survey by ETC Institute. And the second one is to discuss the request to change the fence code to allow eight foot tall fences on residential properties adjoining commercial properties. Who's handling those discussions, those other business items?
I'll be glad to talk about the presentation on the ETC. And I'm not going to get into a lot of detail, but the mayor's office commissioned a group called ETC Institute to conduct a service performance survey for the city. And the results of that survey, at least in the preliminary stage, came in about two weeks ago. And that was presented to the council committee. And there was a number of questions that they've asked, and I don't want to get into the details of it. But you'd be able to, and I think we, if you haven't gotten a copy of it, we will forward you a copy of the presentation that was made before the council committee so that you can look through that. In a nutshell, it was a good report for the city. Majority of, certain large majority of the population of the city that was surveyed indicated that they were satisfied or great, greatly satisfied with the services they're getting in the city and how the city's going. But however, not everything was well received. There was complaints about the planning department. And I think what that really meant, the, based on the details that I was able to read today, is most of the complaints are about approving new housing, including multifamily housing, apartments, townhouses, anything that might be perceived as higher density housing. There was a, a, a common theme throughout the responses that that was not popular. That got laid, at least in the report of the, that was made by ETC at the feet of the planning department. So I'm not sure that that's really a fair assessment by any means, and I expressed that to the city council. Also, after looking through that material, and you may see this as well, is that there are some, some of the items that were measured, were scored and identified by block groups so that you can see where the people who were responding to the survey live or the block that they live on, and also the block group within the census tract that they live. So it didn't appear by looking at the map that people who live in apartments were surveyed. So there, that right there missed approximately one third, one fourth to one third of the population in Gallatin. None of them appeared to be located in any of our apartments, particularly our larger apartment complexes. So I'm I'm concerned about that. Also, there were some reporting the level of satisfaction by block group and some areas, some block groups, the geographic area had nobody respond to the survey, yet they recorded in the report that there was a response. So it might, whatever issue it would be, if someone, they recorded that block group is very satisfied, the map didn't indicate that there was anybody even surveyed in that block group to express their satisfaction level. So I'm real concerned about that, too. And we, I do want to maybe bring this back to the planning commission because a lot of this has a lot of questions about our perform, not just our performance, but where we would want to go in developing our comp plan and policies within our comp plan and and what we need to focus on. So it's, it's a useful tool in that regard. I think it's no surprise that traffic congestion and drainage issues, particularly flooding, and the type of housing that's been constructed or approved in the city over the last four or five years has been of concern to some people. So that's just kind of a summary of, at least how I see it. Others might have, some of you may have have seen it. I I know Mr. Fennell saw it at the council committee meeting.
Bill, I'd, I'd like to chime in. Guys, eighty-three percent, and I think I'm correct on that percentage of citizens that were surveyed, which is well above the national average, was happy with what was being done in Gallatin. And after he made the little comments about the planning department, he still wanted to reassure us that as far as nationally, we rank way up the totem pole. So actually, I think we've done a good job in the city of Gallatin. And I know that there's things that we've got to work on and try to do better at. And of course, that's with everybody, but you know, one thing, guys, people are, are, are popular. Gallatin's a popular place to be, a popular place to live, and you know, who, who, who gets to shut the door behind them? You can't do that. But I'm proud of the way the city is is going, and I'm proud of the the report that we had. Thank y'all.
Bill, I'll just chime in and say, yes, I watched the video. And I'll reiterate, I think that this, those results about planning was growth fatigue. Every year in my own business, my highest attrition rate is in August when it's a hundred and something degrees. People are burned out with how hard they're working, and we've been through some serious growth here lately. So I do not think that it is a a statement about the planning department or staff or the way that the, the policies of the planning department. I think people are just fatigued with growth. I watched it twice, as a matter of fact, and I got the same impression.
If you haven't seen it already, we will make sure that we get that copy out to you. If you haven't seen it already, we will make sure that we get that copy out to each of you as well. And if you want to discuss it some more at the next meeting, we can schedule that on the agenda as well.
Go ahead.
Bill, I hadn't seen it. I'd like to have a copy, please.
Okay.
What is it, Bill? It's like a 10 minute video, maybe, maybe, maybe 15?
Well, there's a video, but also the, we can provide you with paper copies. That way it's, unfortunately, when they presented the video the other night, they went through it really quick. So you didn't have the opportunity to kind of look at the questions and look at the scoring and all that kind of stuff. You didn't really have that time as you would if you were to read it on your own time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just watched the video.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that you do look at the, and, and there's a lot more details. There's, there's actual comments that you can get as well from the public. So you can see how they express their particular view on any particular item.
I wish, I wish everybody would watch that. I think you can get a lot out of that.
Mr. Chairman, we have the city's special project manager, Rosemary Bates, available at the moment. Rosemary, your line's unmuted.
Thank you, Josh. Chair Perrier, if I may, just want to clarify a couple of things. The mayor's office didn't commission the survey. The survey was a result of the city council's adoption of a strategic plan two years ago. And one of the goals was to establish a community-wide randomly sampled objective survey to give us a baseline to grow and develop and improve over future years. So it wasn't the mayor's office that said, let's do this. It was the city council that said, let's do this. The company that we used will offer comparisons to other communities across the United States. And as Sean Fennell, councilman and planning commissioner Sean Fennell said, the company that did this survey was so astounded at the positive views of the city of Gallatin by the survey takers that they are having to recalculate their baselines for the entire, across the United States, community baselines. The survey, we had hoped to get 400 results, responses, and we got 502. I think what this shows, the city and the council and certain departments, and maybe all departments, is that we have an opportunity to educate the public on our processes. That the planning department has a certain mandate and has certain laws that they have to follow. Yet they do not vote one way or the other on the zoning or the master development plans. That goes to the planning commission and the planning commission, many times the zoning, well, all the zoning recommendations go to the council. So I think there is a, an educational opportunity here with the citizens to help them understand there's a department, there's a planning commission, and there's the city council. And that the planning commission members are established by a state law in that they're not elected intentionally to take politics out of the role that they play. And I, I hope that the, the city and the planning commission and the planning department will take advantage of the opportunity to better educate the public. I think there's a very inexpensive way to do that. I do think that as the gentleman from ETC said, this is a reaction, we believe, to growth and tension and anxiety about what that means for people living in Gallatin. And although I do strongly support the integrity of the survey, I, I don't want to question any integrity of the survey and I don't want anybody to leave with that idea. And Bill is right, there's a whole page of comments that people were allowed to make. And when you read through those, instead of just the standard answers to the survey questions, it becomes very clear that growth and maintaining the character of our city is where the anxiety and tension is. So thank you for allowing me to share that. I just wanted people to understand this is a very thoughtful process. The company was thrilled with the results. And again, we achieved in many areas way above the national average. So they're having to redo their baselines for the entire country because how much the city of Gallatin and its residents applaud what the city department has, employees, and most of the work of the city is doing.
Thank you, Rosemary. Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion on that item, we'll move to the final item on the other business, request to change the fence code.
Changing the what, Chairman Perrier?
Sorry, to discuss the request to change the fence code to allow eight foot tall fences on residential property abutting commercial property, adjoining commercial property.
Yeah, Vivian's piece of property is what spurred this.
Who's handling, who's presenting that item?
I'll be able to, you've covered most of it. We had a case with the Board of Zoning Appeals where a person applied for, or didn't apply for a fence permit, but erected an eight foot tall fence in a residential zoning district adjacent to a commercial, mostly commercial, professional office district, let's call it, MRO. And they never applied for a fence permit, so they erected this quite expensive fence. And we took, we took action against them, enforcement action. And their, the result of that was that they applied to the BZA for a variance. And the BZA granted them a variance, but also implied, applied specific conditions that they did not find acceptable to them. So because we're having to do things remotely, there was essentially a request by the property owner who erected the fence. They're going to be, they're requesting of council to consider a change to the code which would allow them to keep the fence essentially that they erected without a permit. So that will probably be coming back to you within the next month, I would think, if that's what council wants us to do. The planning commission can also initiate code changes if they wish. So, I mean, this is, this is one of these unique single situations where it ends up being somebody who wants to change the code again because I guess in this case, they didn't apply for a permit to begin with. So got themselves into a pickle with an expensive fence, so.
Bill, am I right in saying this is a, a house that we discussed on the council the other night, the Vivian Huntsman lady?
That's right. That's the case. It's over on Black Sheer Drive, just off of Nashville Pike at Lake Shore.
Okay.
I, I'll weigh in on this because I was part of that BZA decision to decline her fence. Normally, I would never be in favor of changing the code because one person didn't get the answer that they wanted. But I can tell you in this one, as I read that, I would absolutely be in favor of this because what we're talking about is where the residential property abuts commercial property. In Ms. Huntsman's case, I even tried to propose that she give up two feet of her property and quit deed it over to the commercial property next door, which would have made her fence acceptable. Well, somewhat acceptable. She didn't want to do that, but where your, where residential people are abutting commercial property, why shouldn't they be allowed an eight foot fence? If the commercial property had built the fence on their side, it would be eight feet. But that's the only case is where it joins commercial property. That's my two cents worth.
John, question for on that, where, I mean, it makes sense where it's commercial, but for instance, if it's a, you know, MRO where you've got lots of different uses, you know, would you propose, you know, that it, if the, if the use of the adjacent property was commercial, not just the zoning allowed it? I guess that'd be my question, how you, how you, how you set that up? Does that make sense?
Matt?
Yeah. Go ahead, Josh.
Right now, it would be based on the zoning and the zoning alone. It, it gets really, really complicated when we start determining fence height based on use of the adjacent site or the developing site. It would, because that can change overnight with the signing of a new lease or a new site plan application.
Yeah, well, a good, I think a good example, that's over in Fury Plantation Potter Lane area where, you know, the Fury Plantation's MRO zoning and where the, where the bank, I think, is getting built, you know, behind, behind Potter, I don't remember the name of the road right there. It's one, Greenlee Boulevard comes through. That's also MRO, you know, zoning that, you know, or, or for instance, the, I think we had, you know, similar issue with the, the neighbors on Plantation Boulevard and the Ogden property that was getting developed, both MRO zoning, but ones being commercial, one residential is, you know. How do you, I guess, I would just, I'm not opposed to being, if, if the commercial property is going to put up an eight foot fence that the residential person could do it too, I just don't know how you draw the line of, you know, in some of these zoning districts. And it may be a conversation for another meeting when it's not so long in the tooth of the meeting.
I'm, I'm with you, Matt.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're not done yet, guys.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've, the one caveat, we'll add to that, though, is that if we change the code to say that a residential customer can put in an eight foot fence where it joins commercial, I also think it ought to be made clear that that eight foot fence has to comply with all of the eight foot fence requirements that we put on commercial properties. That is, it has to be engineered, it has to have a permitting process because eight foot fences poorly built can become really trashy looking.
Yeah, and dangerous.
So needs to be some tougher regulations on eight foot fence. Any other discussion on that other business item? In seeing none, we'll end the regular meeting, but as I understand it, we have a, a special guest for some training. Is that correct? Josh and Bill?
We do, we.
Yes, y'all making a motion to adjourn then?
Motion adjourned.
Yes, we have a motion back now and second, Mrs. Hibler, we need a vote on that.
We have a, we have an hour-long training scheduled with a, an architect by the name of Jenny Salagi. If we want to take a, a quick five-minute break, refresh a little bit, maybe get some water and, and come back. Or Jenny, if you're there, we could try and reschedule you. I know that's, actually, we've lost her. She is no longer on the participant list. Let me check my email. Everybody take five, please.
Okay.
Thank you.